Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for all these administrators, our children, our teachers, Lord. Lord bless them and guide them in all that they do and guide us in all that we do. Allow us to live with you and you keep being in our presence and we also in your presence, Lord. Why we just lift this, if we lift this meeting and ourselves up to you and praise you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Randy Rance.
Here.
Ben Barton. Melinda Baller.
I'm here.
Baron Glass.
Here.
Maria Bass.
Here.
Mary Castles.
Here.
Johnny Fallon.
Here.
All right, item A is an executive committee report, Randy.
Went through all the checks, all the checks look good. Sales taxes are up this month, we're still a little short for the year as compared to last year. Another one we want to invite right there.
Thank you, Randy.
Item B is recognized.
Yes.
If you don't mind, can we move item H up so for those who are traveling?
Yes.
Maybe we go back, we can do it at any point in time, just move it up further.
Right behind the 4H update, that's all right.
Yeah.
All right, item B is recognize Sarah Houseley as a junior employee of the month, Pelican benefit advisor.
That's for me or Sarah?
That's for Sarah. I know, trying to make sure you don't trip.
You were nominated for one of the employees of the month and I'm gonna read some words from some of your colleagues. She's always smiling, hardly misses a day of work unless absolutely necessary, and always goes out of her way to speak. She was also so kind to my family, you'll know who this is. When her loved one suddenly passed away in March, she called and text several times just checking on us and offering to help if needed. A truly sweet, kind, and genuine person. Now, there's some other words. She's also a great cook, always bringing something to eat, good to eat to either the bus barn for our mechanics or even here to the school board office for us to eat. She drives field trips and any special trips that she's willing to help out with. She has a great personality, she's delightful to have as an employee. And I just wanted to make this known that she has been an employee of us, of the Caldwell Parish School Board for two years driving a bus as a school bus operator. For two years, she has not missed a day of work, she's had perfect attendance. And for anybody involved in education, that is outstanding, that's fantastic right there. So Ms. Sarah, here June the 20th of 2024, Caldwell Parish School Board Employee of the Month, Ms. Sarah Houseley, for your dedication and commitment to our community, our schools, and our children. Congratulations.
Party's over.
So nigga, what we gonna start doing is making it mandatory that they have a speech.
I'd be shaking if I was driving a bus.
Item C is review and vote on approval of the May 16th, 2024 Board meeting minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the May 16th, 2024 Board minutes.
Read all in favor, Sarah. Item D, 4H update, just down a minute.
All right, so y'all all got one of these with our 4H, kind of our review of events. This year, our club meeting focus was life skills and it looks like that's probably what we're gonna be focusing on again this upcoming year. And so we've got some of our entries for our contests there and then at the very bottom, I was able to update, that was our camp photo from this year. We had 54 campers, seven camp counselors, and six adults that all went to camp. And Ms. Jara Wood, and I brought her with me tonight because Jara has gone to camp as a camper for three years and then I still remember her outside the cabin saying, "Ms. Jana, how do I be a camp counselor? How can I be a camp counselor?" And she has gone for the past two years with us as a camp counselor. And she's a junior leader and gonna be going to 4H University with us also next week. So I'm gonna let her talk to you for just a moment.
I've been in 4H since I was in fourth grade, I really enjoy it. It's a really good experience, especially for older kids like me, because if... But really, I really enjoy it. I really love camp, that's why I wanted to like as a counselor, experience it. I think next year's my last year as a counselor, so... But I really like, I really like it and I'm really excited for 4H University, it's my first time.
And the thing is, what we've been doing for the camp counselors, whenever they kind of move up to 18, 19 years old, then we try to take them back as volunteers. So we, I have, I believe, three that went as volunteers and they went as campers and counselors also that go for this. And then if you look on the back of the page, we put the 4H University on there and we do have five youth and myself that'll be attending that. Our shooting sports, we had 44 members this year, we had seven instructors, I believe we had three extra instructors for this year. And 32 of those 44 members competed at regionals and 22 of those competed at state. And we had two state champion winners and that middle picture there, that's Blake Adams and Madik Shulte, they both won first in either junior or senior divisions in rifle. Our junior leaders continue to grow, we were pretty steady about 25 each year for that and we meet, try to meet monthly and do service projects and they helped with all of our events also. We thank you all for your support of our 4H program.
Hey, Jana.
Yes.
Out of the long Jim was there, I've always asked him the same question, I'll ask you. What is it that we need to do that we're not doing to make it more diversified than what it is? Because for 30 years, I've always seen, Jim gave me his issue, is that still the same issue with kids not being able to have the funds, the amount of money, the donations or whatever? Because if there's something that we need to do, we'll do it, but I need an answer to that course.
Right.
It's always been complicated to do it. So it's not that it's segregated, but we just wanna make it a little bit more diversified than what it is so we can represent the population. Some of them have no answers and some don't even know about it.
Right.
But I'm glad that you've been involved in it and maybe you can tell me something that I don't know or tell us something that we can do to maybe incorporate. You don't have to do it now, but at some point, I'd like to sit down and talk with you, because Jim is no longer here and he told me he was gonna get with it, but I know he's been busy. So at some point, at your convenience, I'd like to sit down and talk. And maybe you know how to suit the tournament and see what we can do to it. Not force it, but just make sure that the opportunity is there. If money is the issue, then maybe the community, churches or whatever can get involved, because I don't want it to be a burden, but I just don't want them to miss the opportunity, because I deal with horses. And I think they can be very therapeutic and keep them, you know, occupied and staying out of, you know, jail and juvenile homes and things like that, so.
I think Jara's a testament to, she started in fourth grade and once she went to camp, she was like, "I'm going back, I'm gonna get involved" and stuff.
Right, because I'm seeing too many roaming the streets instead of, you know, being in something that's productive versus, you know, counterproductive. And I don't want no excuses from the parent that there's nothing for them to do when it is something for them to do, but just being neglected to have that opportunity. So we'll get together.
Thank y'all.
Skipping to item H, adopt resolution commending Pam Kelly, Yvonne McKithen, and Gay Greer for their contribution to girls' basketball and naming the basketball tournament the Kelly-McKithen-Greer Classic. And here, what, Melinda, she's not gonna say anything, but nigga, if it's okay, I'm gonna let her read it. Our baseball is, for years, I've always looked at other places acknowledging their people. And I've always felt, since Pam moved back, that she should have been acknowledged for the contributions that she's given to girls' basketball.
That's a good idea.
I think Yvonne McKithen, she should be on YouTube watching now. I've reached out to her, she wanted to try to make it, but she couldn't. Ms. Holliday, you were there when I was there and I think Maria and, well, I'll call you Holliday.
I haven't called much more.
But I think Maria, I don't know if you know her, but she was at the high school approaching basketball. So Melinda had been talking about it for, ever since she's been on the board, about trying to do something. So her and I kind of been communicating back and forth over the months to try to make it happen. I called John Geis and I said, "Let me just write the resolution myself," because I wanted to speak from my heart. And I think it's gonna be very instrumental to you guys, because you gave a lot to Caldwell Parish. And other than gear, boys, baseball, I think this is the only championship we have here, girls.
Softball.
Softball, okay, softball. So you guys have been a landmark, Pam, all-time great, Louisiana Tech. I hate when people talk about Kim Mark and all these other people and they leave you out. Ms. Holliday, you were here with Mary and McKithen, Marjorie and McKithen and some of the rest of it. You guys had a illustrious career and it's only fitting that we acknowledge the things that you guys have contributed here. I'm hoping that this is a unanimous second, because you guys deserve it. I chose to keep it, Kelly, she's married, McKithen, Holliday, because that's who you guys were when you won the championship. So if it's not offensive to you guys and the board approves it that way, I'm hoping that will be okay. So when we do have the tournament, we're gonna officially lay out everything that we need to do and formally recognize you guys publicly, so the parish can be a part of that. Thank you for coming, thank you for driving from wherever you came from. Pam, thank you for coming, thank you for the contribution. And Melinda, I'm gonna let you read the resolution, if you guys have anything you wanna say.
I don't know, I haven't read it.
Well, Maria, you're the youngest, you can read it. You're the smartest on the table.
Resolution commending Pam Kelly, Yvonne McKithen, and Gay Greer for their contributions to girls' basketball and naming the basketball tournament the Kelly-McKithen-Greer Classic. Whereas Pam Kelly, Yvonne McKithen, and Gay Greer have made outstanding contributions to the development and success of girls' basketball in our community through their dedication, leadership, and passion for the sport. And whereas Pam Kelly has been a trailblazer in promoting girls' basketball, mentoring countless young athletes, and fostering a spirit of sportsmanship and excellence on and off the court. And whereas Yvonne McKithen has demonstrated unparalleled commitment to the advancement of girls' basketball, serving as a coach, advocate, and role model, and has inspired many young athletes to pursue their dreams and achieve their full potential. And whereas Gay Greer has made significant impacts through her timeless efforts in supporting and advancing girls' basketball programs, ensuring opportunities for young athletes to develop their skills, teamwork, and leadership abilities. And whereas the combined efforts of Pam Kelly, Yvonne McKithen, and Gay Greer have not only elevated the profile of girls' basketball in our community, but have also created a lasting legacy that will benefit future generations of athletes. And whereas it is fitting and proper to honor these exceptional individuals by naming the annual basketball tournament in recognition of their contributions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Caldwell Parish School Board, do hereby commend Pam Kelly, Yvonne McKithen, and Gay Greer for their invaluable contributions to girls' basketball and express our deepest gratitude for their dedication and service. Be it, be it further resolved that the annual girls' basketball tournament shall henceforth be named the Kelly-McKithen-Greer Classic in their honor, as a lasting tribute to their commitment to excellence in girls' basketball and their positive impact on the lives of countless young athletes.
I just wanna say, I'm just so happy this has happened.
Thank you, lady.
We did win, they won four championships in a row.
In a row, yeah.
Almost got the best one when the ref went.
He didn't count the bucket.
At the end of the game, he didn't.
Didn't count the bucket.
I just wanna say, I appreciate it so much. You know, I had ten wonderful years here in Caldwell Parish, coaching at the high school and made a lot of friends. And I, you know, I didn't do all this myself, I mean, some people who did, Dawn and Barbara Davis, they bought into any crazy idea that I had, "Let's sell them players, let's go do this, let's do that." And we got to travel a great bit. And Teresa, she sent me, I told her, you know, she sent me all the good players, you know, she trained them and she was so nice to, we had times that we collaborated and she wanted to know what they were gonna do in high school. And you don't find very many women, much less coaches, that will do that. And I'm so appreciative to her and happy for her. And so Tammy gave me permission when we were playing Richwood in the 84 files, to take my shoes off. It was horrible, you know, like we were 17 points down and we were just out there going through the motions. And she, she gave me permission to take my shoes off and all of a sudden, we went on a 17-4 run and we won the game.
Her shoes being heels, because she always dressed for our games.
Yeah, but she kicked them off.
She took those heels off and.
I was so fortunate to get to be a part of Pam's life, her senior year and for her to, for her to accomplish all she did at Caldwell Parish and making just wonderful memories for Caldwell Parish and good things, you know. I really appreciate you and love you very much. I wanted to just say that there's been many people who's attributed to my success, my family, not necessarily my mother, she's, she never saw a reference she liked. But I had a lot of people along the way that did this and I had a lot of players who did this. And where I was fortunate is that they bought in and I'm so proud of the women they are today, they're so successful. I have two that were on the last team I had in high school at Burr and two of them have their lock words and they're all so successful, you know, everywhere. And that means more to me than bouncing a basketball.
You don't talk, but you gonna talk tonight.
I have to give all the honor to God, you know, for blessing me with the talent that he blessed me with. And, you know, she said, "There's so many people that poured into me." And first one being my mother, that poured into me to make sure that I was doing what I was supposed to do, what I was supposed to do. And the other one was Fox and Yvonne McKithen, you know, they just took on that role as my parents away from home. Everything that I needed, or they thought I needed, they made sure I got. If I had to go on a trip or anywhere, we didn't have the money, they made sure that it was sponsored. I mean, so it was nothing that I needed that I didn't have because of those two. So I just take my hat off to them. And then was Gay came along, I was mad at her.
Because she wasn't Yvonne.
Yvonne stopped coaching during my senior year, so I owe you an apology, because I wasn't very, I owe her an apology. And then left here and went on to Tech and couldn't ask for a better basketball coach than Coach Ballmore. So I really credit him a lot for the basketball player that I became. And this whole, can't say enough about her, because she was just a mother to all of us. I mean, without her, it was no Louisiana Tech, you know. So I just give them so much credit for me and I give the ladies that I played with, you know, a lot of them was just so smart. I mean, they was just so smart and they would tutor, help me, they couldn't understand how I didn't understand what math, how to do math problems, because they were just so smart. But, you know, they poured into, we poured into each other, we were like sisters on the court and off the court and today, you know, I still have them as lifelong friends. And I thank the people that's here for coming out to support me too, Betty and Ms. Robinson. Mary Allison's on the board, but I thank them.
I'm not, I'm coming over.
Oh, well, thank you. And then the people in Caldwell Parish, I think all of the people in Caldwell Parish that poured into me, a lot of my, well, most of my dollars did. But, you know, a lot of people here showed me a lot of love, they came up to Tech to see me play in a lot of games and stuff and they made sure that I saw them afterwards. And so, you know, I'm just very appreciative, I haven't forgotten where I came from, this is home. And I thank y'all for nominating us for this award.
Pam Kelly is the wave trophy winner, which is the biggest honor in women's basketball and you may still to this day, I could be wrong, hold the record for rebounds per game. Because I don't know if you still have it, but you had it for a long time.
I'm telling Nathan out after a crowd who was there, she came back home with, you know, her towel and her caliber, she decided to come home and she's been contributing there since. She's been a good friend of mine and I love her to death and I'm so glad she came.
I'm gonna offer this as unanimous unless there's any objection and I'll get you and them and Kaylee to take a photo, so we can do what we can do with it. So I'll offer that as you now.
Where do you want us to get to? Right here, don't, don't trip over my boards. Mike, we gotta do something about all this. I feel short. Are you the official professor? Sure I am.
On one of them, hold the resolution over, on one of the four. Yeah, you and Ms., yeah, Ms. Holliday, that'll be fine, that's good. Gear, smile. I feel like an animal.
Y'all smile, cause I'm on the board.
I tell you what, like. Just to, can I get your laptop in?
Oh, yeah.
I recognize you with your hair down like.
I need to have a toilet. Can y'all put that, I need you to take pictures of y'all too now. Come on, Mr. Randy. Okay, I wanna picture with y'all. I got it. Okay, we'll make sure everybody can be seen now. Okay. All right, y'all, right here, one, two, three, keep smiling, one, two, three, type of what your teenager makes, one, two, three. Congratulations. All right. And y'all are welcome to stay and your mother.
No, we're not, we're not being.
All right, item A, insurance update. Oh, Gary, we got a board on. Oh, let's find a guy. All right, we got a second. Item A, insurance update, Ms. Lauren.
It is overall relatively good, but on your, you have this spreadsheet, it's right here in front of you. Yeah, okay. So on P Cal, which is your casualty and auto insurance, it is up a little bit for the year. We, we're on a new three-year agreement and with costs for reinsurance, through like, our reinsurance cost has went up, but you have to pay $139,000 last year, it'll be $156,000 this year. The crime insurance stayed the same, cyber went up about $3,000. With all that being said, it went up about $20,000, but y'all are gonna receive a dividend of $9,800, so that's gonna offset it, about $10,000. Do you have any questions on the?
So Lauren, you saying we're locked into this for three years?
Yes. It rotates every three years. And there is a penalty, if you don't wanna get out, there is a penalty.
What's the penalty?
I think it's about 10%, 10%?
Of the total?
Yeah, of that year.
So nigga, you okay with being locked in at three years?
10% of what total, I mean, which one are you living at?
Um, do you have the?
The 173?
The 156.
The 156.
The 150.
Right.
You've been in it for a long time and you have a lot.
Since like 2001 or something.
You have, over the years, you've received $99,000 back in dividends and that's at the bottom of your page and you'll see, this is the actual physical check that you'll receive the $9,000. But you do have interest in the pool, so if you get out of it, you lose all that. There are other available options out there, but you're not gonna find anything that's any better with a better deductible for the parish in the pool. You had, the rate, the rate increase was due to reinsurance, because they have to go out and get. You had, the rate, the rate increase was due to reinsurance because they have to go out and get insurance on your insurance. So the way the economy is, that's what raised the reinsurance. But you did have a little bit, your average daily account, average daily attendance for your student is what it's based on and the number of employees.
So three years is pretty standard.
It is standard, yes, sir.
David, you okay with that?
Yep.
And we do shop, yeah, I was gonna say.
And we do shop it every year.
And the rate, this rate's the best rate.
Well, the reason why I ask is because we're always talking about insurance going up, going up, going up. So just making sure that we're not tied into something that could.
Just so you know how our process works. February, every year, we go out to the market and we see what's out there to get the best deal for you. So we start in excess of a hundred and twenty days out to get you the best option available. And we do go to every market that's a market for a municipality or public entity.
Well, David, have on that.
You know, when you say you shop it every year, all right, when we're in three-year agreement.
We still shop it to see what's out there to offer you.
Well, I was going to ask you, is it possible that it could go down?
This, if they got a good reinsurance rate, they may offer you a reduction. If your student count changed, you'll get a reduction. If your employee count changed, you'd get a reduction, yes, sir.
Or if you were to be equals.
Yeah, the number of autos, if that dropped, if you had twenty buses and it went down to fifteen buses. Yeah, it is a possibility that your numbers will change based on the exposures that you have for the school.
So we're at four hundred and thirty-six thousand now? That's what our total cost is for the premium?
Okay, so that, that's the, that's the property. So that one page.
Yeah, we're talking the casualty stuff. And now we'll talk property.
So one fifty-six versus one thirty-nine. And then, like you said, we're going to get back ninety-eight hundred dollars.
And that'll be a physical check, just good.
And on the next page, that's, that's where the large cost has been over the last few years, has just increased, increased. And mainly due to the market. We have no admitted carriers now, like four, maybe five years ago. We had one carrier that was admitted, so it was in the state of Louisiana that covered basically all of our school boards. Now we went to a layered and shared type policy. I'll, I can show y'all a little bit more on page, on the next, on the next page and then we'll go back on the pricing. But cross cover is the first twenty-five million and then paragon is right in the other seventy-seven million. And those two added together is your total TIB, which is your total insured value for all your properties. But if you go back to the first page, well, it's really the second, but the one in the middle. Page two, last year, the wind and hail deductible went up to five percent. This year, they did offer a three percent. So that is a savings if y'all, if y'all do have some sort of claim in that. The total cost went down twelve percent, so about sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars. So overall, if you watch it all, y'all are still going to pay less this next year. And we also, we don't have it with us, but the work comp went down this year also.
So there are some things going up, some going down.
Yeah, but overall, overall, y'all are actually going to pay less this next year.
So Lauren, like when we install cameras and security systems, does that help with the insurance rate enough?
Hmm, not really that much. More like sprinklers and things like that.
Roof updates, you know, the actual, you know.
HVACs.
So David, you don't need to be looking at something.
But that'll cost a lot too.
Where's Jane? We actually had this conversation.
Because then we just.
He's in my. He's having a change on the current law. So will that make a difference? You know, they're supposed to make it easier for insurance companies to come into Louisiana. Will that?
They, there is some legislation where they're trying to have more companies come back into Louisiana. Because of all the hurricanes, the storms, the hailstorms, the water damage and all this. It, it take, when there are so many claims in a pair, in the statewide, it takes all the bond money that they had saved up to help pay these claims. And when that's all wiped out, all these companies start moving out of Louisiana. So you have the, I mean, we go to forty-five different companies. Anybody that will take a look at it and offer as small of a five million dollar layer. And sometimes we have to have four or five companies just to get to the smallest layer. When all that bond money's gone, they raise all the premiums up trying to get the bond money back up to help. And FEMA also helps when there's losses. So until they get that money recouped back, the rates just are, keep going up. But legislation, like you said, they're trying to work with them and help. So it's relieving some of the strain off of some of the property crisis. So we did see some reductions this year on some of them.
I know the other day we went and saw Julie Lintlow and she was there, we're talking about that's what they're trying to do. And then I've seen different posts and stuff.
They're working with the Department of Insurance, trying to get companies to come back and trying to relieve some of the stress, especially in Louisiana, Florida and Mississippi. Where there's just so much damage and so many catastrophic events all over the place that it just creates a big, huge mess everywhere. But like I said, we were, we go out in February on everything, every line of coverage. And we got really good news this year by just getting reduction on the wind and hail deductible. Because that's a big deal, five percent with a hundred thousand minimum on a building, it wouldn't take you long to not be able to recoup anything from it. We also tried to get a property pool started and put the property back in PCal, it used to be in the PCal. And those numbers weren't.
These not, well.
Go ahead.
These, these numbers were better.
Way better, yes.
And so they shut it down, but they're, they are going to look at it again next year. We spent hours and hours pulling old SOVs, old lost runs and sending it in on all of our school boards that we write. And so it was very upsetting when it didn't work.
So the former employee, you looking out for the best, right?
I do, I do. And I'm telling, I was super excited about a little bit of, I know it's not a lot, but a little bit of decrease because, because I know.
We work very diligently. We work hard.
Where any decrease is good, we want to change increases.
Right.
Maybe just general question, not, not that there's anything wrong, but just to make sure that, you know, we're trying to, because we got a cut somewhere at some point.
And your work comp went down by about twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
So that's.
You knew that, Nick?
Well, we just, we just, we just met with David yesterday. And then, like on the student accident insurance, it was a flat resource. So, so overall, I think y'all are going to save maybe forty thousand, something like that. No, maybe even more than that.
Yeah, the comp will stay on the.
Yeah, so.
Well, the insurance news is better than legislative news. So we, we glad y'all came.
I'm so glad you're glad to see me today.
Well, this will be the last year that it's a y'all.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm actually retiring effective July second. So Lauren's going to take that one, she's going to do a really good job.
So Lauren, thanks for looking out because I know, Nick, you and David, y'all have talked about insurance for the last three or four years, going up, going up, going up. So ninety-eight hundred dollars is ninety-eight hundred dollars.
Worked through.
Yeah, so anything that's beneficial. Obviously, some areas are going up, some going down. So it seems as if it's balancing itself out. We're still getting the best, you know, rating. If you're comfortable with the three-year deal, Nick, I don't see why we should look at anything else other than moving forward.
And I think Randy asked about the ten percent clause. I mean, if there's another insurance company came out in the next year that offered more than, more savings than a fifteen thousand.
You can weigh about, you can weigh, taking a penalty over switching companies.
So, I mean, it's not a, it's a gentleman's agreement locked in. And, I mean, if we had, if we saw a better opportunity to cut the price even more, then we would.
No, but what I was going to say about claims, so we worked, Kate and him and John Gies, and then David can test by this. We, our claims department works with the claims department at Edwards-Roose. And I mean, it's, it's pretty, I mean, it's, it's, it's really good.
They work with your bus drivers, they work with everybody. I mean, they do top-notch on their claims.
And they do all y'all's training, all your bus driver training, that's totally free. And if y'all want any additional training, let us know, we can get more things to come out.
And on your work comp side, I'll say the people that handle your claims on the work comp side, they come out and do training for your teachers, do teacher in services. Like at the start of the year, if you wanted your cafeteria workers to be trained on slips and files, on knives. If you want your maintenance people to be, you know, while they're mowing or while they're doing any, anything, they will train for that. They'll, they will come out and bring people out and train, you know, in services for the start of the school year. Your comp people do that also, the people that handle your claims. So, I mean, you have lots of good people working on your.
Have Jane, Sam, do you ever utilize that, Nick?
I don't know, but I'm writing it down.
He does do the bus driving at the very beginning, but there's also like CDs and things or things they can download.
That can be provided to school.
Yes, and like once a month, they could say, you know, all these people or everybody needs to do so many hours of this and so we can, we can roll all that out.
But that's another job we're handing you, Mike.
Here it comes.
That's good if they offer all those services. I mean, it's sort of balancing out if you were paying.
Oh, yeah, and that's all totally free.
It's all totally free. And on your comp side also, they'll send you videos and they'll keep up with the hours that are, if your maintenance director says so many people need to take those hours, they'll keep up with it. Same for the cafeteria. And it's all totally free.
It looks good too, though.
It does work good. It's a real good, they have a real, really good thing for teachers, kindergarten teachers about not standing on desks, not when they're doing bulletin boards, you know. Not getting on a rolling chair, you know, stuff like that.
I mean, even if it prevents one thing from happening.
Exactly.
I've seen a lot of their videos, they're really good.
Even them, I have moved them, so I know. I know what you think.
I got to know this thing.
But that's good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Make a statement.
All right, I'll take.
Bye, y'all.
All right, I allow to discuss and vote on adoption of millage rates for tax year 2024 because of year 2025.
We've done this before back in March and we had to revisit it because the tax assessment was not too quick. It's a reassessment year, so they had to go back and reassess all the property. So that's the reason why we have to redo this because the millage rates obviously have changed. Skip page zero because that was just when we not, meant to not include it. In fact, you skip to page three to five and the red column opposed. You see the increases and the decreases. We have an increase of a hundred and five thousand dollars on the general fund, twenty-seven thousand dollars on maintenance. And we have a decrease on debt service of eighty-five. And the decreases because that was, that million two thousand dollars is how much we need for the bond, bonded interest payment per year. And that's how much we collect this amount. So overall, we have a forty-seven thousand dollar increase, which is about one percent on the three-point-eight million dollars that we collected in the prior year. And I also know that red column, this is year 25, millage, those are the millage rates. So for the general fund, we have five point three this year, last year was five point four-four. The five forty is the maximum amount allowed. And it's based off the revised property tax middle dollar values. So the values run up, so we don't have to put them down a bit. And then for the rest, the rest, you know, in line with that as well. And again, the debt service went down in order to accommodate the debt service. And that's it. So after any questions, any questions? It's all pretty easy.
So it's an overall increase of a hundred and five?
For general fund, yes.
And it increases, right?
And more of an increase would be better.
So what caused the increase?
Revaluation of property times, property values. And so if you have a hundred thousand dollar house, it's revalued to a hundred and ten and it remained based on your property.
Yeah.
So that's on the status.
We're nickel and dime to get through, aren't we? Nickel and dime to get through.
Exactly.
Do we have a vote?
Yes.
I make a motion, we accept it. Both of you.
I'll do a roll call.
And the millages are listed on page two or five, that's the resolution, so I'll skip over that. So that is exactly what y'all agree.
Ms. Melinda motion, Ms. Johnny seconded, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Randy?
Yes.
Mr. Barton is absent. Ms. Melinda, Mr. Glass.
Yes.
Ms. Bass.
Yes.
Mr. Castle, Ms. Allen.
Yes.
All right, item G, is adopt 2024 compliance questionnaire for financial audit.
All right, that's item G. And this is a letter we send out every year to the auditors upon their request, of course. And it's just basic information, it's kind of a rep letter, preliminary rep letter, we do a rep letter at the end of the year. And this just gives the basic general information about the school board. And it's a little bit of assurance that we're not, that we're following the big law, the bottom budget law, we're not violating big grants or contracts. And so we're, far as I know, we're doing all that.
So we are.
Yeah, far as I know. Then item, page six of six, y'all can look at that and make sure your information is correct. To the best of my knowledge, we have not had any changes from prior year. And that's it, so.
And then do we have a spot check to see if we are in compliance with just little odds and ends, maybe like every now and then?
I mean, this year, we've had so many compliance, outside reviewers from batteries coming in. I mean, if there had been something, we were, they were bound to find out. So, I mean, because the S R people were in.
Yes, we just finished up another desk monitoring. It's been in two weeks ago on all of the S R money. That was a task. It took everybody in this room.
And then the financial audit people come in and they, they were doing the same kind of stuff, different, different volumes, of course. So, I mean, it would be called, at some point, we would know something.
So is that every year that they come in and do that kind of stuff?
Yes, the desk reviews, it's hidden, yes, it's just what overall, everything.
We're always going to have some, like this year we had three programs, right? At that one point, plus I didn't even count all the early childhood ones that you have done. But this past, this past spring, we had three programs audited. And so every year, some program's going to be audited.
Yeah, because somebody, somebody would be responsible for that. And I guess the reason I'm asking because if it didn't happen, then it came here, you know, our course would be what was put in place to, you know, eliminate. So I'm just kind of making sure that if it's not being done.
Now, Head Start did have a monitor program that we're, we are addressing a few things, but it was nothing that you can complain about. Because it, I mean, there's three levels, you know, you get complete pass and then there's a slightly.
You ain't got to get up until, yeah, I'm just trying to make sure that we are aware that if we need to do something that is being, you know, because, I mean, obviously you guys know what you're doing.
Yep.
Only reason we asking, only reason I'm asking is to make sure that we, we are aware that if something needs to be done, that it's being done, you know. So I'm, you don't have to explain that much, unless y'all want to hear it, I don't.
Did we hear vote on this?
Yes.
All right, who want to have a motion? To make a motion, we accept the 2024 compliance questionnaire for the financial audit.
I second.
All right, can you roll call on this? No, all the papers are out. All right, item I is approved literacy and integrationist behind the twelve grade job description.
All right, so I sent you all a check just to let you know that Bessie met on Tuesday. And although there were some things that we're not having at the Bessie meeting, one thing we are is that we were approved for our literacy grant, which is four hundred and seventy thousand dollars to use at Columbia Elementary, Grayson Elementary and the high school to improve literacy. And so there are, of course, with all grants, certain things you have to do and to agree to do. Ms. Carrillo will be in charge of this work as well under her literacy innovation coordinator title. But one of the good things about that is that we did the budget yesterday and we'll be able to pay her salary for two years out of this grant. And so we're excited about that. And then we will partner with Achievement Network to implement the pre-teaching strategy at those schools. And we're going to also do that at our other schools, just so we're all working the same. But another piece was that it would provide, we already have literacy interventionists at the elementary schools and at the junior high. We've never had one at the high school. And so when we started looking at the job descriptions for the literacy interventionists, the qualifications was that you. And so when we started looking at the job descriptions for the literacy interventionists, the qualifications was that you had an elementary education degree. And we felt it fitting that we would change that job description for nine through twelve so that we could open it up to be an elementary education, um, degree or an English six through twelve. We would prefer a reading specialist or an E L A content leader certification or science of reading certification. Um, and so that's basic job description. The only other thing I think we added in here was D, that they implement the pre-teaching interventions and district literacy initiatives. And that, um, F, they participate in the L D O E mandated professional development sessions. It's a lot that will begin in July. And so there's a lot of training that goes in with this. And so we're looking to, um, open this position up as soon as you approve the job description so that we can interview and get someone in place and, um, begin preparing for especially the work that we want to do with our incoming ninth graders. Um, we have not had a lot of work with students when you get to ninth grade that who can't read. But we know that that is a, a major, um, problem for our students. If they can't read by the time we get to ninth grade, that's, that's going to set them up, you know, for, um, a lot of struggles. And so, um, this, the state released the science of reading training for adolescent literacy. And Ms. Carrillo went through that training and she's got it all set to do with our, um, students in grade six through twelve, our students' teachers, so that we can begin teaching secondary teachers how to teach reading to students who are not in lower grades. So we're so excited about the work that is coming with this.
And this is going to help catch the kids that were during COVID.
Oh, we're constantly, yeah. And, and of course, Ms. Carrillo is going to give us a literacy update, so you'll see the work that we've been doing since then. But we will, we will be, we'll be fighting that battle for a while.
Well, Maria reads very well. She did good too.
Maria, uh, Atlanta, when Nikki called me, she was excited and, and so was I. But the more and more I listen to this, I guess my question and concern is, we already know that that high school is a different monster. Okay, so Maria, they're going to look at you as somebody coming from the elementary level, just like they did Atlanta. Okay, so what got, what have you guys had, I guess, thought of to try to get them to buy into whatever it is that you guys are going to be, uh, you know, implement to them? Because if they don't buy into this, it doesn't, this money that we're getting doesn't mean anything. So have you guys thought about it? And if you haven't, uh, what is your plan, Atlanta, because this is going to be at your school? So, uh, what is it that you guys, uh, I guess, because this is not going to be easy. I mean, we, we don't have to face what reality is. I'm hoping that the buy-in would be what it is because since we've never had it at the high school, this could be very advantageous to those kids that are there now. That's if everything goes the way we want it to go. So if it doesn't go that way, I'm assuming that supervisors, uh, whatever you need to do, uh, to get them to buy into would be beneficial. Okay, but at some point, a leader has to be able to make decisions that if you're not part of the process, you're part of the problem. And we don't need a problem because we already got what we're trying to eliminate. So have you guys thought about that in any way, shape, form, fashion?
When we do interview people that are going to be in that position, we want people, um, that recognize that every kid, every student can read. There, the kids can read, they're just struggling readers. So, uh, not to get them on a level to where that, um, but you want them in that position that's going to fight the kids, to be able to go with the classes with other teachers and help those teachers understand that all students, you know, have the ability to read. They just need more help and be able to pre-teach those kids. And I think that, um, you know, after we start working together and find that right person, that they'll be able to.
Because you know, you got some strong-willed teachers. And I guess my, my expectation would be, uh, if there are any issues, the superintendent should know. And if you know about those issues, we, we need to resolve them before it gets to December, January, February. Because this plan needs to go forward, it needs to be beneficial. It's something that has never happened.
I think the kids, I think the teachers are going to really appreciate having somebody that's going to be able to work the kids to help them get the kids to where they need to be. Because it's hard for one teacher to.
That's true.
Kids, so.
But we're going to work with ninth graders first, the ninth grade and the English one teacher. So that's who we want the buy-in. And then once they start seeing that growth, like our elementary's did and the discussions, the roundtable discussions we have, it will, because the, the professors in the area will tell you just how, when they started seeing that data and how it's impacting them.
But the reality is, high school teachers don't like elementary people.
Oh.
Well, again, we're laughing, but that's the fact. So what, what I'm saying is, because I'm looking at what could be there, since we know that, let's try to get everybody on the same pace. Because at the end of the day, we don't need to be graduating kids, we need to be educating. So if we can get them to where we need to do so, Nick, I would hope that if there are any issues that, you know, you guys can.
Well, our idea is to start small, create buy-in, create success. And when you start seeing success and that carries over into their classwork, then more people buy into what we're doing. And, and the partnership that we have with, um, A N E T Achievement Network, we're also partnering with, um, some of the money with Ms. Meredith's grant and the, the Students with Disabilities and SPED Strategies to work with special education teachers and just really do a, an overhaul of that small group and then start seeing success.
So, so specially it'll be included in this? I don't see why they wouldn't buy into it. But, but again, this is something that we're offering. I need to make sure that the public is aware that these are programs that have never been offered at the high school. Capitalize on it because it, it does no good for us to just know about it. So I would like, Mike, uh, Elena, whatever the internet page is, that that information is out there and is promoted heavily. Because again, Nikki was excited. And to be honest, I hadn't heard, I haven't heard of to be this excited in, in a long time. So I, I know it had to be important because when she said it hadn't been at the high school ever, uh, this is a.
People who've been in elementary, you see how excited kids are when they can read and when they are successful. So, well, we've all taught kids how to read. So, um, when you, when those teachers see that the kids aren't going to be excited and encouraged that they can be successful, I think they will.
Well, in, in September, just be ready because I'll be asking for updates.
Well, and she's going to give you, and I hate to steal some of her thunder, but, you know, we started this at the junior high in sixth grade two years ago. And we fought some hurdles of, of teachers not wanting an interventionist in their room or pulling their kids out. And when they started seeing the data, and you're going to see it in a little bit, I mean, it's just, and then we expanded to seventh grade this past year. And so you just, you just, we've seen it work.
The high school is just a difficult.
And so, um.
Two things, two things I'd like to say. One is, I've worked with people that can't read or write. They're very good at hiding the fact that they can't read or write.
That's true.
I've worked with people that can't add and they're very good at, at hiding them. So at the high school level, I can send elementary level, how much easier it would be to get kids to, I'm not talking about teachers buying into it. I'm talking about getting the kids to buy into it. You know, at the ninth and tenth grade level, to get a kid to, to buy into this and really, really work at this, I believe that's going to be y'all's hardest, that's going to be y'all's biggest objective is that. That's the hardest hurdle y'all.
I can comment on that, that's why we, we have to go with the pre-teaching strategy. And the way that the pre-teaching strategy works is it doesn't take us a kid out and teach you how to read on a baby reader or a first grade reader. It takes the curriculum and the novels that they're already reading and they pre-teach the vocabulary and, and the strategies in their remediation class so that when they go into the English class, they already have a heads up. And they already know a little bit more so that they can participate in the conversations and the discussions. And it's not the first time I'm reading.
Big Beth.
Huh? I, I have actually read this with my interventionist beforehand. And so when I go into the classroom, I'm going to feel more successful because I know what I'm talking about. I have a little heads up. And we had to choose one of two strategies and we all met and said, pre-teaching is the way and keep kids in the classroom. So the way that this is set up is they'll have an intervention class and then they'll have an English one class. And the interventionist will be in both places. So they're actually getting a double dose with the interventionist. The part of it's by myself or in a group of, you know, seven or eight. And then the rest of it's in with my peers and my interventionist is helping everybody.
So Nikki, is it identify kids or all kids?
It's identify certain kids that we have that meet certain criteria. Randy, going back, uh, to your question about being ninth grade, not wanting to stand out. If I'm not mistaken, those ninth graders were already had this, that they had it in sixth grade.
Yes.
So they had sixth grade, so they did, you know, we had to push in seventh and eighth. So those will be some of the same peers that did have an interventionist going in where they were in sixth grade.
So Maria, is, 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 go ahead, Randy. All right, the second thing I want to ask, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, this is going to be paid for by, by a position that was already there.
Yes, we're restructuring, yeah, we're, it's not a, it's a new position, but it's not a new salary.
Yes, not a new salary. But that salary is coming from the fact that our librarian, is that right?
Um, we're looking at some of those.
Restructuring.
Restructuring the responsibilities of that position.
And is that going to be part of this position?
We've got to work that out, yeah.
Well, it's not that.
No, because it may, we, no, no, it's not. Because it doesn't have to be. And you want a little bit of flexibility and if that model doesn't work, then we assign that person to something else. So I know it doesn't make sense.
No, that, that makes sense. So you just need logistics work out?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I can show you on paper, it's not, not like this.
But, you know, right. When you got a job that could be. So you want to prove a contingency bond or you want, what do you want to do? I, I, I see where you're going, but I think it's a necessity.
Well, already, teachers at the high school teach multiple classes and subjects and content areas anyway. Sometimes you have one who teaches all English or all math, but then with your C T E classes, you also have teachers who teach a little bit of math and a little bit of business.
So what you're saying, it will fall under K?
Yes, 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 that's it. That's it.
You saw that.
They saw that, yes.
So you're okay? So, so Maria, is, is there any way we can track the results from? I mean, you, you got to give it time to work. So I'm not saying the first year it should be, you know, bills and whatever. Uh, but within the second year, we should start setting a good measurement of, because you already said that those kids that'll be getting it, got it when they go to sixth grade.
They have some portion in that sixth grade.
So maybe we will see.
We will see it. And, and, and part of the grant requires us to track it.
Okay.
So, and, and part of, part of the grant actually pays for some of the tracking measures that we would be putting this data into. And she'll have them doing their data meetings, just like they do at the elementary and junior high too.
So you'll have another work.
Constantly.
You, you have another work, all right?
I'm sorry, another work, or you'll have another intervention.
Interventions, yes.
Right, okay, and that person reports to who?
To, to Rita and to Maria.
To the side administrator and Maria.
Okay. So if, if you've been on the elementary level, now you're on the high school level, what supervisor will you report to? What director will you report to, both?
I report to Ms. McCain.
Okay, you report directly to Nikki.
She is my supervisor. That's who I report to.
That's how y'all wrote her down.
Yeah, but it's, it should, you should have been reported to elementary director, then to supervisor.
We talk all the time.
We communicate constantly.
I'm not talking about talking, I'm talking about reporting is the way it should have done. But if y'all are okay with it, that's fine, as long as there's somebody there that you can report to, to make sure that what needs to be done is done. Because I, I do have a concern, I'm not missing my words, I do have a concern at the high school because I've been getting chatter all the week that they're still not comfortable and happy. So to add something else, I, I want it to work, is what I'm saying. So whatever we need to do, uh, I'm hoping they don't terrorize you, you know, like, like you can be terrorized. So, yeah, at the end of the day, hopefully it'll work and, you know, we can get some good results. All right, do I hear my sir? So who wrote that grant? Who wrote it?
We all do.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, yeah.
Well, I was going to just offer a unanimous, uh, motion. We all together, yeah, yeah. Because you don't always get congratulations.
Well, it came as we, our meetings with the spec department and, uh, the literacy, the head of literacy with the spec department, um, they were just, she asked us what we needed and we told her. And she's, then she came back to us and said, I think I have some money. And at the next meeting, and we're like, yes, you know, and then it just kind of happened, you know?
I, I guess what I need to ask is question, you know, who's the reporter for the paper? Because I, I don't see what I need to see, uh, with stuff that comes out of this board, uh, and this being one of them. So hopefully it's a headline with, uh, this particular program being offered. Because again, we shouldn't have issues with marketing information that's out there. Because people always say, I didn't know about it, I didn't know about it, I didn't know about A I C. Uh, you know, it's the stuff that we had at C and A's and stuff. But it's, it's right there.
It is.
So I'm, I'm not sure how people have missed it. And I just don't want us to be responsible for something that we could have been doing so if, yeah. I don't, Katie, do you send them?
Yes, they're on my email list, just like you guys are. Um, but they don't come to the meetings anymore. I mean, it, it should be a headline.
But we're paying them, right?
Seventy thousand dollar literacy grant approved for Hollerfield School Board. Yes, I agree.
Maybe we just need to press release.
Well, my question is, we're paying them, right?
We, we, they run our minutes. They, they watch YouTube and they, they run our minutes, you know? They can't always be here, but, um, I mean, I consider writing articles for them, but, I mean, goodness. Secretary for, for different entities.
Yeah, I mean, because information needs to be out, is what I'm saying. So I'm not critiquing what they're doing or what they're not doing, I'm just saying it needs to be a better job of the information that the school is providing. Because if there are programs, I would like for people to know what those programs are and how they are benefiting, uh, this kid, especially this ninth grade. Because remember, a kid that was there nine, ten, eleven, twelve, they didn't get this. These kids are going to be getting it now. So for the next four years, they should be progressing, uh, better than those that came before them. So I just would like to see some type of headline, Katie, if you would, you already got so many jobs doing stuff, so.
And reporters do the, yeah, I mean, they, they come to the background.
Yeah, they do the best they can.
Yeah, they don't know what.
Right.
They know, they don't know what I know.
And she lost, I think, I literally think there's one lady even.
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not critiquing them.
Yeah, we've been talking very favorably, not emailing, not talking.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to be looking for it.
Well, when you send it, you can just say, can you please make the headline?
Yeah.
Blur screen. Yeah, yeah.
They've been very.
Yeah, let that be, let that be the. And I think Melinda will run it, how do you send it to her?
She will.
How do you run it, you sign with us the headline, you tie it up, she'll run it, she'll, she'll.
Elena, are your teachers aware, are your teachers aware that this is coming?
Well, we don't know, I don't know all the details about it.
So you'll send out a newsletter or something, right?
Yeah, we'll probably do that.
But thank y'all for working on all this again, that Bessie just met Tuesday.
Right.
And then voted yesterday, so, yeah, it just happened. I got word Friday that it was going before, but you kind of want to wait and make sure that it passes.
It's brought forward. It's going to be great, Katie.
Well, I make a motion, we approve the literacy integrationist job description.
All the papers out? All right, item J is literacy update, Ms. Maria.
Well, y'all know, I love to talk literacy. So I shortened my slide, but I do have, they were telling, we met today and we went, it was just so amazing, the conversations. Uh, anytime we have these, you are welcome to come and sit in and just listen to the discussion. So if you're not seeing the whole, uh, show, so I'm only showing part of it, I'll sneak another one too, but okay. But if you'll go to the first slide, uh, when we look at data, this is kind of like a story that'll lead a meaning to you. This is the data story of Hollerfield School history. At first, when we get all these reports, that's what it looks like at the very top. It's all just piled up. But then we start looking at, we start sorting it and then we sort it, okay? Just arrange it so we can make sense of this. And then we start showing it visually, whether you see the charts, the color charts that we have. And then it builds our house and it tells us a story of what our data looks like. Uh, this is where we are, we K to six right now. And you remember that we talked about L D O E, did decide on one literacy screener starting now. So I can't really compare this year to last year because it's apples and oranges. Because it's a totally different assessment, the way it's tested. So this tells where we're, we're starting at. At the beginning of the year, we were forty in the red, but now we are at thirty seven in the red. Understanding that K to three is taking this test online, they are timed, they're having to read it on the screen. So I am really happy to where we are because of all the details that kids have to learn. But seeing the great impact in this was when we had the training with the. So I am really happy to where we are, because of all the details that kids have to learn, but seeing the grade impact in this was when we had the training with the teachers, and showed them exactly, they became the child, and they were testing each other. The conversations, they realized, oh my goodness, I need to know what my kids need to do with this test, so just test, showing them what it meant. But you can see that we are at forty-seven percent, uh, right now on grade level, uh, twenty percent or above level, so we even increased thirteen percent in the blue, that you see, these, these kids that are above benchmark, we increased that to twenty percent. We increased our, we came down, so that means some, even twenty-eight to twenty-seven, we pushed some of those up. We actually, if you'll look, we had nineteen yellow, go to seventeen and sixteen, so it's been dropping. So we're actually working and filling in those gaps, even the red, it went up in the middle, but then we said, okay, we've got things to do. Each principal looks at their data, and you'll see the next few slides, and then they say, we gotta make some changes. And the conversations that you hear in those meetings, uh, even today, just watching them and listening, they know now what they have to start in place, starting August, based on the data of the kids that are transitioning to their grade, so they know. Uh, the next slide just shows where we are, this is prepaid, and Ms. Rhonda, uh, is not here, but I told her I would share hers, and this is how it aligns with what we're doing. Because Ms. Rhonda and I talk about it, and so alphabet knowledge for them is our letter naming, and so what we kept saying is that our kids are coming up, but they're still not knowing the letters well. So we started talking, the format she does and the format we do is a little bit different, so Ms. Totes can add to it, but they start saying, okay, let's put them in lines, like they're doing in kindergarten, because, so they'll know that's how they're tested. So even then, you see the growth, they only had what is, uh, from six percent above to now thirty-one percent. So now, as they're moving up to kindergarten, we're excited to see, at the end of the year, what this is gonna look like, because we're able to get down to prepaid and start building them ready for kindergarten. And so you see they're at forty percent with just alphabet knowledge, knowing the letters, just want that, yes. The next one is basically a very foundational skill, which this is amazing for us, because if a kid cannot hear the sounds in words, they're not gonna be able to put that word together. So if I said the word cat, we want them to be able to say act, because if they're reading and they're sounding out of word, if they don't hear it, they're not gonna be able to blend it to put it into a word. So this is what is so important, look at their growth, eighty-two percent of their kids are ready for putting up the words, which is a foundational skill for learning to read, and this is just amazing, what they're doing.
Looking on that blue and green.
Yes, that's what, that's what we're excited, I know Ms. Smith today was excited to see that, because that's her kindergartners, and first, uh, kindergarten that's coming to her, so she was very excited to see this. Uh, and so the next slide, so when we meet, and I just put theirs up, but every time we meet, we talk about what worked, what, what our next steps are, what do we need to do? Some things that they want to work with, that worked for them was the daily rise, and it's kinda like an accelerate intervention for them, and it's called, I love the name, I wrote it down, it's reaching instructional success in early education, that's what it stands for. So it's, they're doing the same process we're doing at the elementary, but doing it there, and it has worked, is what she shared today. Uh, and so they look at, okay, what do we need to improve, so every time we look at data, this is what we do, what do we need to do? Yes, we're, we're growing, but we still have areas we need to work on, and this is what they do. And then the next slide, you'll just see, this is something we talked about, when we talked about our students with exceptionalities, I just wanted you to see the data that we're looking at, it's just so much. But the kids in the blue is all of our kids in kindergarten, and that tells you their growth. We had kids grow from one hundred and one points to one hundred and twenty-five, that's your kids in blue, that's every kid. Out of those blue kids, look at the red, those kids come in intervention, so those kids are growing one hundred to one hundred and twenty-five points, one hundred to twenty, look at the growth, and one hundred and twenty-six to one hundred and fifty. Those red, that red bar represents the kids in, in intervention that's coming to get it, so they're growing. The yellow is our students with, uh, exceptionalities, and that's, uh, Meredith can tell you how excited they are with that. We, this is, we pushed them in with this year, and look at the growth, even our babies that have struggle reading with exceptionalities are growing. You have one that's grew between one hundred and seventy-six to two hundred points, because they're receiving intervention with an interventionist. And so they're getting not what's on in the classroom, spent support, but they're also getting intervention with interventions. So that's what makes us happy, we have this for all report, you keep going, that's the same one for first grade, we have another one for first grade.
And I just wanna explain too, it's not going in this way, if you want them in that, in that middle, it's kinda like a bell curve, you want the majority of your kids pushing really far up in that middle part.
And so what we do next is that we have this, we track it down per kid, so when we look at data, and I had a code of the names, but if you look, look at the kids at the blue, that means where they were at the beginning of the year, and where they are in the middle of the year, and now where they are at the end of the year. You see the growth from, look at, uh, from the blue to the yellow.
So Maria, my question is, we got head start, prepaid kindergarten, first, seventh, and third, if, if all of this stuff is matching out, how is it that kids are getting to, uh, second, third, and fourth grade, and they still can't, they're still not what they need to get?
Those are those kids, we are identifying, that those kids need that extra more support, and that's where it comes referred to them.
Cause I guess what I'm getting at, if, if we got these layers, it would seem to me that somewhere before they get, you know, I get, I don't know if it's easy identifiable, or how does that work? Cause I, I guess when they get into third grade, would be me, the ball was dropped somewhere between, cause it's, well, it should have been-
We're closing the gap as quickly as we can, is what we're doing.
And we've only been, this, we're going into our third year of this program.
So I, I guess what I, the, the next course would be, if there's a kid that's not there, is it in the best section to put him there, him or her there, or just leave them here until they can get here on their own?
We look at it as a committee, and we make that decision, and we look, and what we call the tier one is that, uh, they're getting, uh, all of the teachers instruction, a tier two is they're getting, uh, thirty minutes extra with the interventionist.
That's the employee all share.
Right, yeah, that's it, and then tier three is that if the kid is not getting it in tier, in tier two, then we come back, we meet, we put them in tier three, where there's no more than four kids in that group. So now, it's a smaller group, more intentional, based on their data, we are building and closing those gaps.
And then if they're not there, they, they're, they're kinda retaining.
Then after eight weeks.
Then we move them on to her department.
Right, yeah, but I'm saying, to, to determine that they don't go further, there, there's something that statistically proves that, okay.
We have the data that will prove it, that they need more support than what we can give it.
And sometimes that means they need another year of that.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, yeah, to determine rather than push them forward.
Something else I wanted to, you talking about that, like when we're starting young, with an IEP typically, as a three and four-year-old, they're not gonna get an IEP unless it's developmental, um, pre-disidential delays, because they've not been in school. So it's hard to say they're behind when they've never been in school.
But you can see some delays though, right?
Delays, yes, but if just academically, they won't qualify at that age, because whereas if they're in first grade, you can say, here's where you should be, and you're not there.
So them not getting an IEP, is that something that's, uh, not required by the federal regs, or what?
It's just the fault, but that's what I was gonna say, the state shared with us at teacher leader, there's gonna be some changes-
Well, it should be.
-in childhood, where there can be some earlier qualification, where they would not only get that intervention with, um, for literacy, but have some spent support.
Is, is that something that the board needs to look at, uh, to not be strenuous, but put some measure there that will help the child, because it's not the child's fault that the government doesn't say that they get an IEP here, when we know that they should get an IEP, or something to the lights, to determine.
I think that supports coming, I think this year we're gonna see a difference, and I, Rebecca and I haven't talked about it yet, I just got a teacher leader.
Nick, what I would like y'all to do is, at some point, you're, in your staff meetings, to kinda talk about it and bring it back to us, cause it, cause I've always advocated that, the earlier they get what they need, the better. Now, you're not, you're not penalizing the kid, you're actually helping the kid, because it's not the kid's fault that they don't know what they know.
Right, but if they get to third grade on level, it's gonna come.
So if you guys can kinda discuss that at some point.
Yeah, right, and so like Janaye, the kids come into her already, she already knows who's, immediately she's gonna start pulling, cause she already knows they need that support. So she's like day one, they're gonna give them a couple of days for those days of, they're doing, and then she's gonna start pulling, cause she already knows what's coming, and she knows they're gonna need that support. Now, if we see a child that's going through this, and we realize, oh, we do, do need to talk more with, uh, people praising Ms. Meredith, that we need, we're seeing something, then we come to her and say, look, come and look, and what's amazing about the meetings, because her people come in and join the meetings. Also, Ms. Jamie will come, and Ms. Tony, when they're available, they'll sit in the meetings, and they'll hear us talk, and they can give the teachers suggestions on how to handle this child.
So how many weeks have passed before that happens?
Uh, every four weeks we walk, we meet, every four weeks, and then if there's any time they need, look, we need to look at a person, they, I mean, they can refer that preschool.
I just think it helps you guys from the, the beginning.
All right, you're saying with the reading and interventions, you're, you're working at different tiers, one, two, three, five, is that right?
Well, the tier one is to hope everybody gets it in the class, but tier two is what she pulls for thirty minutes, and she can have up to eight kids.
Right, right.
So that's an extra.
And tier, tier three is?
The interventionist pulls them, but it's now a smaller group, no more than four.
And that's what she does all day?
Well, she has different tiers she works with, she works with groups.
But she works with those, although she doesn't do anything else of this.
That's what she works, she has her groups from tier two to tier three, and that's her job. She writes the schedule out with her teachers, and then she starts pulling them, and that's why you'll see them pulling them, even at the bus line, she will be pulling them, uh, they'll go and follow them, but what's amazing is, uh, Ms. Rens, is when we have teachers at the end of the year say, I can't get a book out of this kid, he's walking around the school now with a book reading, because he learned that he can do it. And so that's what's amazing, but yeah, that's her job, she works with the kids that struggling with reading, that's her interventionist job.
Okay, so she has a scheduled, you know, each hour schedule for this student, and this student, and this?
Right, yes.
And then you have each principal who is using their resources within their buildings to supplement that, uh, like Ms. Smith is using two parents that she could be using wherever, and they're doing the work, they're supporting Janaye as an interventionist.
And Janaye gives them what to work on, and so she was telling us.
In those tiers, is there any communication between the interventionists and the parent?
Yes, sir, we always send, anytime we meet as an MTSS, we send a progress report to the parent. Anytime we give the screener three times a year, there is a note by all that has to go home to the parent.
Is there communication to the parent that what you're doing at school can be duplicated at home?
It tells them what we're gonna do, if we have to schedule a meeting, we'll check that, while it says, we may have to schedule a meeting because we have concerns.
What's the interaction that's from?
Uh, we haven't had any problems, they're okay.
Good parent participation, yeah?
Yeah, now, I mean, there's a-
So the parent communicates directly with the interventionists?
They can, or to the principal, is, is, you know, cause we will tell them, if you have any questions, reach out to the principal, and then they can reach out to the interventionists at that school. And they can even set up a meeting, if you wanna come and talk to them, tell me some strategies you use with my child, they can do that.
We have talked about going forward.
Just this coming year.
Just based on some things that we've experienced this past year, just things that we can help improve with the parent communication, is inviting them, once, if, if we move a child to tier two, and we see those supports aren't, I mean, the child's not progressing like they should, inviting that parent to the end of this, being a good student.
It could prevent, what we talked about when we met, whatever tier they go to, if the parent was part of that, and explaining to them, this is why, this is the benefit of it, uh, you know, just not to make it more complicated for us as a job, but any, any little interaction may create a better relationship with the parent.
Even if they can just meet with a phone call, or a girl talking to something, um, that way the parent can meet with the whole team, because it's a table full of people. Um, and we look at attendance, we look at the child's, you know, grades, we look at their data third, we look at, you know, the historical data of, of the child while we're there.
If y'all do what y'all did with me, it's an A plus, it's, it's nothing that, I mean, you leave knowing what you need to know, and it's your fault if you don't do what you need to do, cause you guys did a, a hell of a fine job in there.
And, and that's to any parent that wants to come in and be at us, the doors open, we will sit down, and when you actually see it, um, charts, it kinda opens their eyes on what their child is doing, so that's it. So, uh, we do have this for every teacher, and that's why Grayson Elementary, they have their own class, so the teachers can look at and say, oh, little Johnny didn't grow as much as I need, let me go see what else I need to do for him. So this is shared with the principals, that they have, can go with their teacher and look at each class's, uh, data with that teacher.
But there's not a kid that didn't grow.
Right, you can see.
They may not be where they are they need to be yet, but they're growing, and, and that's that yellow line.
Right, at the end of the year.
End of the year.
And what's amazing, you'll go to, and this for Ever School Columbia, some of these kids, even though this is a second grade, some of these kids may be working on a kindergarten, a first grade level, but when we give the test, it's a grade level test. So they're, look how they're growing, even if we're working on a kindergarten or first grade to fill their gap, look how they're growing, taking the second grade test. So that speaks volumes, that tells us that our interventions are working. Now, we see somebody decline, then we say, okay, we gotta go look at that intervention and figure out what's going on. And those are the conversations we have when we have those data meetings, uh, MTSS meetings, and so this is what they're available for every school, we do have, uh, the next one is Central also, you can see every child group. Even though fourth grade, this is a fourth grade one, we may be working on third grade or second grade skills, but when we give this test, they're taking the fourth grade test. So it tells you, even though we're working below their grade level, they're still, we're closing that gap to be on the fourth grade level. It's just gonna take us a little time to get there, but we're seeing that growth. And then the next one, um, I did, I wish we would put the sixth grade in there, but it has worked tremendously with sixth grade, but this PowerPoint is available, uh, if you wanna come in and meet with me, I don't mind, if you, anytime next year you wanna sit in those meetings, please, it's just amazing just to sit in, Ms. McCann actually got to sit in all of us, the district change set today, and just seeing the conversations is amazing. So I wanna end with this, this is our story, we have work to do, but with our amazing dedicated team, we will move all our students forward in this.
Well, hopefully, with all this, this starting so young and going up, that our, our seventh, eighth grade high school people will, we won't need the interventionist after a while.
I'm working myself out of a job.
No, you're not.
Maria, five, five years ago, you couldn't get Maria to stand up and do that, so that, that had been, that had been-
She's her element.
Yeah, you, you, you couldn't get her to talk.
I made the meeting today with those same side last about three hours.
Yes, I reduced this tremendously.
But she has by grade level everything, if you want to, I know she'll share it with you, um, so it's pretty, and they had like posted all over the wall when I got, cause I was about an hour late. By the time I got in here, they had been standing up studying each others, and they knew, okay, these are the kids I'm getting, and these are the kids I'm sending to you, and-
Well, let me ask you this, seeing what you see now, from when you, when you began with the, um, with the schools, that how we, um, you know, set the-
Instructor.
Yeah, restructure, um, do you see how better it is?
Oh my goodness, yes, I shared this in our exit interview with Ms. McCann, uh, because the kindergarten, you see that grow, because they were able to all come together as that team, and not kindergarten here, here, and here. They had, they were sharing strategies, that it went through all the classes, cause everybody was doing it on campus. And what happened is if this teacher said, but it's, you know how some say, yeah, it's working for you, but it's not gonna work for with my kids, they can actually go in and model that lesson within that classroom, and really see, oh, it does work with my kids that I have. So it, it is, it has been amazing.
I wanna say though, to her credit, one of the things that she's really doing is changing mindsets, because, you know, in the past, um, we didn't necessarily have the opportunity to have an interventionist work with students with, that had IEPs, and I think there was a little bit of fear, like, well, this kid has an IEP, they're probably not going to grow, they're probably not going to. And, I mean, those graphs that y'all saw that were whole class graphs, I mean, the, the students with disabilities were in all of those graphs, but I can tell you, we have kids with autism, kids that have intellectual disabilities, that not only grew better, but are above level right now, because have tinnitus. Yeah, um, and don't, no are qualified for services this year, um, because they've done so well, and to do that, it's not just the hard work, but it's her being able to convince, um, you know, people that these kids can, you know, grow and accelerate at the same pace as everybody else, and that's an amazing thing to see.
So Nick, at, uh, the communication, you, you pretty much just give them freedom and flexibility to kinda move and change? So Nick, at, uh, the communication, you, you pretty much just give them freedom and flexibility to kinda move and change.
They do their job.
And you just get up there and stuff like that. I think that's good, because when you have what you have and do what you're able to do, it, it makes it a whole lot easier. I guess my only issue is that every month we always get into elementary status. Maybe the, uh, secondary supervisor can give us an update on what they're doing there at the high school to give us, um, what, you know, information on the needs that we have. But I, I think you guys.
Well, sixth grade, and I wish, you know, 'cause I was reducing it, sixth grade did grow so much this past year. Even with the interventions happening, it was just amazing what they did. And so hopefully now that's moving on to the ninth grade, I'm looking forward to it.
So Marie's coming to our new next month? Or is it this year?
It's this year.
Yeah, yeah.
We're trying to get everybody on the same side.
But I will say this, I couldn't do it with my amazing team. The principals, interventionist, it takes all of us in this room and it's just amazing the work with some dedication.
Superintendent had, had a rep and we got.
Right, people in place, you don't have to worry.
Right, see on the books.
That's right, that's right. Rowing in the same direction.
And tile one is actually buying her iPad because they can't go up and down with that, uh, like, we call it the Chromebooks.
Chromebooks.
Yeah, so we're doing our part.
Touchscreen. We have to have touchscreens for testing when they switch over to digital. The kids don't test on paper anymore. They actually scroll on a Chromebook, uh, to read a passage or to read the alphabet or whatever. And then we score using a touchscreen.
And I will say, without Ms. Wally, I'll go ask her for mine and I'll go ask her for mine, but she always comes through.
So if, if they're using Chromebooks, are we checking to make sure that their eyes are okay when they're doing it?
Yes, sir. We can enlarge it if we need to and I'll ask them first, "Can you read it?" And they can't read it.
Good job.
All right, um, can I use a financial update?
Sure, sure.
I'm gonna skip my financial update and just go to the budget.
Hey, hold on Dave, before you go any further, we, we're gonna have to have some issues with you. Uh, what is it, ninth inning sending us this information? We want to, we have to give this video on that.
Wait, say, say it again?
You're sending us this information at the ninth inning.
Oh.
You know I had to tease you.
Two hours.
And then you always qualify for a cent.
I probably gave that cookie yesterday and I gave it good grace.
He did his job. He did his job.
Anyway, uh, but anyway, yeah, y'all did have had the financial update in, in your hands for a day or two. So hopefully y'all can work out for it. And I've said pretty much the same thing I've said in the past several months, so we'll skip that and just go directly into the, uh, into the budget. Which is item L. Uh, item L, first page has all the funds listed and the ones that are being amended are in red. Uh, general fund, and a lot of these didn't need to be updated specifically to say the funds were in budget package and for fifty-five percent. But I like looking at general fund in particular because I wanna know kind of where we're going with it. Uh, that's the one that always scares me the most, 'cause it seems to have a little bit of a close to it. Uh, but I did have looked at the others as well. Uh, and returning to page to, uh, page L, page two of two, uh, that is the general fund funding. Uh, first column is the original budget that was presented back in September. And the next column, column B, yellow column, is the proposed new budget, uh, just for the general fund. And then the third column is a change, column C. And if you look down on revenues, that's the first three lines, and then staying in column C, we're changing that by sixty thousand dollars negative. So that's a variance from, from the original by thirty-eight, point, point three eight percent. Then if you look all the way down towards the bottom, third, fourth line to the bottom, total expenditures, we have a ten thousand dollar favorable change there. So we're within point oh six percent on getting, getting that number pretty close. But within those numbers is a lot of change. Uh, revenues, property values increased, which were like, village, uh, property tax related to a hundred forty-eight thousand dollars pretty good. Uh, MFP went down, we beat that horse to death. And then, uh, other is the timber sale that came in, the extra interest that we have, ninety-two thousand dollars. We earned on the, uh, money market.
CD, CD.
Not, money market accounts that we opened first time. And then this year, this month, I added the Spartan statue that has to be added in for financial purposes. And so that, even though it's noncash, we have to put that in there. Uh, then on, on the expenditure side, uh, for regular salaries, we increased, or, I'm sorry, we decreased salaries thirty-two thousand dollars. Uh, four of those line items were just coding changes and a lot of those changed whenever we had that MFP stipend amount. And we had to have people in a certain category and we kind of reevaluated where people were. And legitimately, they fell into new categories. So the budget did change a bit on those. Uh, there was, you know, some of those smaller dollar, uh, dollar amounts were largely due to over positions for a month or two. So that was that. Uh, the great professional second line to the bottom on the regular salaries, that was where we lost the, uh, margin position. And then under substitute teachers, uh, for other salaries, substitute teachers, uh, we increased that from under twenty-eight thousand dollars to under sixty-two thousand dollars, which was largely offset by substitutes other than teachers, which, uh, had, which went down in favor of forty-four thousand dollars. Stipendate, uh, there's a sixty-four thousand dollar change there, but that was due because we have a fifty-five thousand dollar extra, uh, SCA grant I've got a day to see this for.
SCA, it's high school, I know. It's part of Christine money.
Okay, yeah, that was. So anyway, that's the reason that line item changed. And then under other benefits, uh, we had a favorable change there of a hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. And I noticed most of that was teachers' retirement. And I think maybe I just did not use the new break for the new year. I'm kinda guessing on that. I did look back on that. Uh, clearly I was a favorable change. And then under line payroll costs, we had a hundred twenty-two thousand dollar negative, uh, change there. And, uh, there, there's a lot of movement in a lot of those line items. Uh, the big thing to notice is other purchase services, that's insurance. And we moved six hundred thirty-three thousand dollars of insurance to the maintenance fund. And we did that in order to be more compliant with the seventy percent requirement for instruction. And the reason we have a maintenance fund and all other school boards have it here, so they can dump some of these costs off into the maintenance fund.
So repeat that again, Dave. You did what to do what?
We moved six hundred thirty-three thousand dollars out of the general fund into maintenance fund. Now that that is completely offset by a transfer, transfers don't count against it, it's only seven percent. So it's just a money, it's a money shelter. So maintenance fund is not affected in any way other than showing a transfer.
We get a finding if our general fund does not spend seventy percent of its money on.
Instruction.
Right. So when your property insurance goes up, you gotta do something with that. So you stay in compliance, 'cause if you're not compliant, then you get struck.
So is this something that just happened? I mean, 'cause we hadn't been doing.
We should have done it past two, three years. And in fact, at the very top of the page, uh, column D, I, I said, um, moving. Oh, I thought I had it.
So the movement is just to satisfy the law?
As long as it's, and it's legitimate. So, I mean, everybody does it. I should have done it a couple of years ago.
So Nick, did we ever decide what we wanted to do on the, uh, the sick days to, to, I guess, kind of balance the amount of money being spent on paying two pieces to one John?
We're gonna do some.
You know, we talked about the, uh, the cured sick day, you know, uh.
Sick leave.
Yeah, sick leave.
We're going to do some professional development on why it's important to keep your sick days and how you can use those at the end of your career.
Well, but if they don't do it, we still got a problem, right? So do, do we need to go down and address this from a policy standpoint and let it be effective in January? Or you wanna just wait until, 'cause you, you, you told me the last time that you were having issues right over there. That it was money, we, we spending excess money. So if we need to stop the bleeding, I mean, we just need to do it. Uh, and it doesn't have to go into effect. It needed, it could be January, but we need to go down and look at it, because it's not gonna stop by just talking to them. 'Cause it, 'cause if it's me, I don't think you should tell me how to use my days. That's how they're gonna look at it. But if we put something there, even after you guys sit and have your, uh, your inserts, we can look at it.
I'd like to just start with education and just, you know, let, let them know, this is what you, it looks like if you don't use all your sick days. If you have this, it adds another year to your retirement, which is gonna increase the amount that you bring home. I think those are conversations we need to start with.
Right. You see, Nick, if people look at money short term, not long term. So, uh, if, if it's gonna be an issue, I'm saying at some point, if we need to look at it, if you guys are okay with it the way it is now, I'm okay with it. I just wanted to bring it back up, 'cause we did talk about it, uh, the last policy, uh, meeting. So, I mean, I don't care what we're doing.
I think the, the big problem is the long time.
Yeah. So if you wanna wait and, uh, deal with it then, that's fine. It's, it's up to you and me.
I think that sense.
Okay. Well, just try to hesitate.
Yes. So anyway, that, that's the reason we have those large numbers on, uh, other, other purchase services and then further down, we have transfers, uh, six hundred thirty-three thousand dollars. And, uh, that wraps up the general fund. Uh, the other funds, uh, I scan, I P D, I sent y'all P D up by email from here today, about two, three hours. And, uh, anyway, but those are in fairly good shape. But the, the one big thing was on sales tax, uh, originally we passed a budget with a hundred twenty thousand dollar transfer from sales tax to the MFP stipend, because originally I thought we were being way shorter than what we wanted, we were short about twenty. So instead of having a hundred twenty thousand come out of sales tax, we had twelve, uh, which is obviously a huge, big break. Uh, let's see. Uh, sales tax itself, you know, obviously the checks go out on June thirtieth. Uh, they're probably a little bit down, not, not a lot, not appreciably. Uh, I mean, every year we have to kind of look at what grants we have that possibly can fund, uh, sell the sales, the thirteenth check. And that's favorable for sales tax pool, because then we have extra money to do that. This year, I, you know, we had one or two grant and then extra money has gone shorter and shorter. So that pool is, um, we also have no pool, but probably zero, uh, as far as how much we'll be able to run. That was probably quarter to fifty thousand. So it's not big numbers, but it will affect, you know, check a little bit, uh, so.
I need you to look in that camera and explain it. The reader one, they don't know this information is because that formula is totally different and, 'cause I get it every year.
Okay, and, and yeah, I'm vice brought that up. The Caldwell formula is.
Talk to the camera.
It's pointing at him.
Oh my gosh.
All the other school boards that I've ever looked at, you know, I mean, I used to go to the all of them, Monroe City, Washita, Tinsall, and Union. And they all have a flat amount they pay out to the teachers and, and staff. If you're a teacher, you get this much. If you're admin, you get this much, bus driver, custodian, you know, whatever. And it's not paced on years of service. So if you're a zero-year teacher, you get the same amount as a thirty-year teacher. Our salary is based, or our payout is based on how many years you've been there. I, I, I mean, that's a huge component. So, you know, a zero-year teacher's not gonna get the same amount as a thirty-year teacher. And that, that's the big, big thing.
So, and, and so everybody's check is going to look a little bit different because it's based on the number of months you work in the school year, because your allocations, you get a little bit of it every month, you know, and so it's gonna look a little bit different. Plus it's your years of experience and, and it is frustrating that you can't give a number and you can't do, but at the same time, I do appreciate the way that y'all, the board and whoever set this up, because it, it honors longevity. And so the longer you're with us, the more your tax check is going to be. And so it's a pain to not be able to say, "This is what it is." I mean, um, you know, my husband was asking last night, you know, "What's it gonna be?" And I said, "Well, it's probably gonna be about what it was last year." You know, maybe up or down, you know, a little bit, but, um, it's just one of those things.
And then we gotta run off, we paid the June, July, and August payrolls for the teachers that we run in June in order to move the final amount for that calculation. And those get run as late as June twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh. We gotta pay out on June thirtieth. I mean, I run them. I, people know how much they're getting paid within a, sometimes a few hours to when it's calculated.
But it is, it'll be paid June.
June thirtieth. Yes. I, I think that's a Friday. No, no, it'll be paid June twenty-seventh, I think, whatever Friday is.
I think that's a Friday. June thirtieth is on Sunday, so we paid out on June twenty-eighth.
Yeah, but it, but it's not as simple as A and B. It's, it's a lot more to the former. And that's the reason why, 'cause like I said, it's, it's all those, of course.
What is the difference? Why is it we're different than the rest of the people that?
That's the way we decided.
Like they set it up back.
Resolution.
I mean, I, I remember Washita's very restrictive. It says, you know, X number goes, X percent goes to teachers. X percent goes to everybody else. And then it's broken down to, uh, well, at that point it passes to the board. How much does the board wish to allocate when they're given a number, kind of, they have three million dollars to allocate on whatever.
But David, I, I did ask him if we needed to revisit and change it. His indication is that it will make it more complicated. So I guess the position would be for the state the way that it is. It's easier this way, even though it's not producing the, the same outcome that you would want it. But if we changed it, it would be a lot more complicated, especially since it's already, you know, in effect now. 'Cause I, we, we talked about it, Dave.
I mean, trying to grandfather it out and go to how many school boards pay, you know, it would be.
They would get less too.
It would be less.
Yeah. Yeah, so that, when we did it, we fixed it to where the employees that had longevity would actually benefit and it would actually, you know, make them, you know, want to stay. But if biofuels get here, then it's gonna be even, you know, if, well, I can't give a number, but it's gonna be a, a whole lot better.
Again, I.
Yeah.
Hopefully some of that money can be used to pay for some of the general fund expenses for retirees or benefits, which is a board decision. Uh, and that's not Nicky or it's not me, you know.
But that would be a recommendation, all right?
That'd be a recommendation, yes.
I mean, it would, it would be advantageous to do.
Yep. And, and I know there's also a misconception that if somebody quits in the middle of the year, that their sales tax goes away and they don't get any part of it. They're paid a part of that sales tax based off their previous, up to three years. If they have less than one year, you know, there's a bit of point with that.
'Cause I think it's a step, is it every, is it every three years, three, five, ten, the years of employment that determine?
Yeah. But, uh, for sales tax, if they quit in the middle of the year, we look at their past three checks for sales tax and we'll estimate based on the work days they worked in the current year. And if they work half the year, they get half of the check basically from the prior year, uh, prior years.
But if you completed, I'm gonna say this, if you worked up until the last day of school, you're going to get your entire thirteenth check. You can go ahead and resign or, or whatever you need to do if you're moving on. But people, there's a misconception that I'm not gonna turn in my resignation until after I get my thirteenth check, which holds us up from being able to find certified teachers. And so that, that is a misconception. You've already done your job. You're gonna get paid for it the same. You're not getting any less anymore. It's the same amount because you did your job.
I mean, once you get to whatever magic day is, say May thirty-first, or the ninth month, I don't know where it is.
May twenty-third.
May twenty-third. And, I, I mean, at that point, your June, July, and August checks are locked in.
Yeah.
As well as your sales tax. So I, I mean, there's nothing they need to do in order to turn the check. They've earned it. So one hundred percent, and that, that will. All we gotta do is flip the calendar.
So what you're saying is because they're standing, that's holding you up and being able to hire.
Yes. And, and there's just a misconception out there. They think if I resign before June thirtieth, I'm not gonna get all of my check. And so they hold off and then we can't open up positions and, and hire. And so, and that's not true. And we've tried to say, I know we've told y'all, stated in your faculty meetings, it's not, but you still have people hanging on, waiting, you know, because they, they don't. I just say that for the record.
Yeah.
You've completed your job. Yes.
So, uh, so do you, do you want to talk any more about the, uh, budget amendments and maybe?
We need a question to accept this amendment.
I'm making a motion to accept the budget amendments.
That's so good.
All right, all right, amends are. Item L is a district leader's update.
Sixty seconds or less. All right, I'm sure we'll just get on the line in like sixty seconds.
We are working on inventorying. We've got about fifteen hundred devices that have to be inventoried. And it's taking thirty to forty-five minutes per device, so it's taking some time.
So you're telling Nick you need some help?
We're just having his end of year conversation. He's doing it.
The other is, uh, the RAVAP that we tested at the end of the month, last, last month before teachers were out, worked perfectly. The people that got the notification were the ones that were supposed to and those that didn't, did not. So it's, it's a coordination across the parish with multiple entities and it's worked well, so.
Good job.
Quick, short.
Ms. McCann?
Uh, we used a portion of the diff grant, the transitions grant, to do a summer program, you know, down at the cafe space. We've had, um, so far, six of the eight kids enrolled, passed that certification.
Woo!
So.
That's big. These are adult tests.
Yeah, and I think the kids were so excited about, um, some of these kids have taken the class and not been able to pass. Others had not had the opportunity. So huge, um, moving in the right direction. We're looking more, you know, forward to opening. We will be set up on the Fourth of July at downtown, which I think is July sixth. So if anybody comes down there, come down. So if anybody comes down there, come down Main Street and come see us, we're just gonna have a very, you know, sort of more like an open house. Um, because McCann and I are, um, talking with Ken Roberts, um, in the next couple of weeks about how they can really support us to meet some of these new requirements that, um, with the internships through these entities, if they can help us expand them out more, a little bit faster than maybe what we had thought to get all of them there.
Because they have to be paid, right?
And that passed too.
Yeah.
The new accountability proposal passed.
That's, that's gonna be a deterrent for some people.
Well, fortunately, we have, um, community partners who we are working on and we'll be able to phase in a certain percentage and will be rewarded at least if we have made a five percent growth each year with the number of students that we have interned explore.
Rebecca, is it an hourly rate or just a spike?
We don't even, we don't, we don't even know. But, um, I, I, Ken has assured us that this is, this is the most important thing to him and their community benefits thing is helping us in the school system with this project. So we're very hopeful that between them actually opening up and then some of the enterprises through this grant that they're supporting us in that we...
Oh, Nick, I, I just, the next speaker for the next meeting, uh, Caterpillar has something that's out there specific for that, so they'll be at the next meeting to speak over. Yeah, so you, you may be able to get with them and, uh, find out because they're trying to find different, uh, places to actually, uh, send kids to, to work.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I'll, I'll see enough based on my...
Ms. Adam?
Yo, Rebecca, can you invite those individuals here to the next meeting?
Yes.
Uh, so they can be acknowledged?
Yes, I will.
Oh, yeah!
I will, I will.
Great idea.
Yes, I would love that.
Well, it's, it's those are the ones that's often overlooked and they need to be, uh, you know, given credibility just like, you know, any other student walking across the stage and, and their parents would be proud of them. So, uh, it's just a way of showing sympathy and acknowledging. So if you don't mind, just...
I would love that, thank you.
I mean, Maria said it all. I mean, what more can I add? I'm, I'm a happy, uh, elementary director, thanks. Monica?
Um, we had a great signing day, um, in May. So for the pre K, we had sixty four kids coming up from Kelly. We've registered twenty eight new kids for a total of ninety two, uh, pre K four, um, pre K three, there were twelve returning kids who turned three after September thirtieth that started last year. We've registered sixty four new ones for a total of seventy six so far. And we have the next, uh, registration day, July ninth and tenth, and there are people that called, so, um, we'll see more than that. And we have some pretty big changes that are coming down with changes from office head start that we're going to look at and realize the things we're doing. But we talked today about doing some different things for leaders and just kind of, maybe that everybody's sharing responsibilities, working as a team, so we're excited about the next year.
We're working with the school on their student room plans. Student room plans of their Bible are the roadmap for them to improve their school for the school year. So, um, the Tower One's plan will be done, got a Tower One to make use of same school and do a plan for that. And also we're working on, uh, content meet, content meetings and data meetings, but that's gonna be held in, uh, June and July, um, at each of the schools. Of course, we're doing a super afternoon this due June thirtieth, so we're all excited to get that.
Excited?
Yeah, about done, you know, other than, um, what's in the bag? What's on the board? Don't I get one of those?
Oh, yeah. Can Julie put her on the board? I was gonna say, y'all want to hand us those next year, blank cell cell?
Yay! Okay, yeah.
I'll get my own one.
You're gonna like them.
I'm getting mine.
Just come back and make. Yeah. All right, out of me and the superintendent's report.
All right, mine is short and sweet. You have, um, in your, in the back of your folder, it says superintendent evaluation. Um, you have to evaluate me every year by June thirtieth. And so I try to make this as easy as possible. That's just for my contract. The language on the second page, super, super easy. Take your phone, take a picture of this and you can complete it online and then Gary will sign off on it. So all you have to do is answer the questions and, um, and evaluate me.